Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Board of Education. It is Monday, October 6th. Will you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
[inaudible] To the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ross, can you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Pastor Moody?
Present.
Reverend Mathias?
Present.
Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
Dr. Baker? Ms. Slade?
Present.
Mr. Ross? Yes. Uh, Dr. Randles?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Present.
Reverend Fogg?
Present.
Reverend Quantrill?
Dr. Baker is excused. First on, and our superintendent is not here this evening, and in her stead is Ms. Carolyn Evans. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
First on our, oh, I need a motion for approval for the agenda.
So moved.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Ms. Evans, first on our agenda are the celebrations.
Yes, Dr. Fogg. I'd like to bring forth Irma Lopez and our friends from Fifth Third Bank. And they're here with celebrations regarding our Young Bankers Club.
We're here with the Young Bankers Club from Fifth Third. They're working with us in the Loop Program. It's a program that last year we did two sites. We did campus and Brookside. And this year we've doubled that up, and now there are campus, Brookside, Mulick, and Staki. And with me tonight is Mr. Patrick and Mr. Cuevas.
All right. Thanks, Irma. Thank you, board, for having us here. Yeah, a year ago, we came and we talked about that we were launching Young Bankers Club. And I brought a book for all those who would be interested in seeing what the curriculum looks like. But Young Bankers Club is a 10-week, hands-on, youth financial education-targeted, fifth graders. We had a great time with that last year. I actually invited Omar, who was one of our mentors, to tell you a little bit about his experience with the program. But before we get to that, we also do another program called Teach a Child to Save. And we've done that for, since 2002, et cetera. This last year, in 2014, it happens every April, which happens to be National Savings Month, right? This past year, 2014, we reached 575 GRPS students with about 55 hours of our staff time teaching the programs. We were in 26, made 26 presentations at seven schools. We were at Aberdeen, CA Frost, Grand Rapids U-Prep, Harrison Park, Martin Luther King Academy, Riverside, and Sherwood Park. And this is sixth through eighth graders. And actually, those numbers were down from the previous year, so we had 575 kids this year, about 1,000 the year before that. Due largely to challenges with snow days and making up snow days and those kinds of things. But we really appreciate the opportunity to be in the schools and provide some really basic youth financial education. So maybe with that, I'll hand it over to Omar.
Absolutely. It's a great experience to be able to be part of all the different programs that Fifth Third has with GRPS, either with Junior Achievement Volunteers or Teach a Child to Save Month, and now with the Youth Bankers Club. And the Young Bankers Club is such a rewarding experience to have professional individuals, diverse professional individuals in our Grand Rapids Public Schools going out and spending 10 weeks with students. We make it a point to make sure that we're dressed professional when we're going out there, so they see role models when they go in their schools. Yes, we talk about banking, we talk about savings, we talk about, and we incorporate a math element in every single week of our curriculum. But more than that, we get an opportunity to talk to them about their goals, about educational goals, professional goals. And we make a connection with these individuals that are really important to us, I think, individually as well, as we also have GRPS students, well, in this case, myself. But it's important and rewarding as an employee at Fifth Third Bank as well to see what we're doing in our community as well. So it's exciting that, we're going, it's my second year now, and now I'm shifting schools, and it's a great opportunity to also see those young individuals now in the different, in the northwest quadrant now this year.
There's, thanks Omar, there's one Fifth Third mentor for every four students. So there's a lot of people involved with this, and it's, you know, two hours a week, 10-week commitment, so, and so that we're very serious about it. We also have an end-of-year celebration, which was fantastic. So this year, it'll be December 10th. And what we do is we bring the kids down to the main office at the bank. And I think we do some more, we did a little career fair kind of a thing, and we introduce them to different jobs that you can get in the bank, which, you know, were full-service kind of, from marketing to everything. But I had a little job fair, and then they got to take a tour of the cash vault, you know? Which-
It was fun for me even, but I'm telling you that I think the kids were just so excited to see all the cash.
High loads of money. But so it was a really unique experience. And we finished it off then with a, Teresa Weather O'Neil was our keynote speaker and, you know, said some comments to all the kids. Our president was there along with myself, and we handed him certificates of completion, and had a really nice, then cake and ice cream celebration. So really finished the whole event off in a great way, and we're gonna do the similar thing. And at this point, Mayor Hartwell's gonna be our keynote speaker on December 10th.
And I just, I wanna just read the Young Bankers Club pledge. This is a pledge that they read every single time that we meet. It's part of our commitment and their commitment to taking away the most they can out of this program. And it reads, "I pledge to fully participate in all weekly activities. I pledge to complete all weekly assignments to the best of my ability. I pledge to learn how to properly take care of my money. I pledge to think about my future and goals necessary to help me achieve my dreams. And I pledge to have fun."
Very good. Nice. So Maureen, you wanna give us a little update on, or Ms. Slade, you wanna give us an update on our student rep?
Thank you. We have a huge process going on to recognize, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Gorman if you can just kind of tell us what you're doing.
Absolutely.
Because he's got a really nice process going to make sure we get very weird candidates.
That's okay. Good evening.
Evening.
Reverend Fogg, members of the board, Mrs. Evans. We have a process for selecting the student representative to the Board of Education. The principals have identified about 13 individuals who are leaders within their buildings. So this week, we are doing formal interviews. The students are going to be rated on their knowledge of the Board of Education. What do you believe your role is as a student rep? The level of understanding or purpose of a student rep, professionalism, et cetera. So we are, we're trying to narrow it down to a couple, but we have some phenomenal candidates from all of the high schools. And at the next board meeting, you should have two shining stars from a, from a nice crowd of 13 shining stars. So we'll do our best to have the, the very best GRPS has to offer as members of this Board of Education.
Thank you. And thank the principals as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're good to go.
Great.
Good to go. Thank you.
...involved with it, and just doing a great job.
And if anyone would like to assist, please let me know.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Public comment, Mr. Ross, do we have any cards for agenda item, public comment?
We have one for Mr., one for Mr. Paul Hilder.
Mr. Hilder?
Not quite skinny enough to have those arms in like that. How are you all this evening?
Well.
Good. Thank you. I will keep this relatively short. I just wanted to set the record straight on a couple of things. Most pressing, one of the issues which we're looking at tonight, which is the charter reauthorization for Grand Rapids Child Discovery Center. There are some folks who think that because we ended up having to file a grievance over some actions taken by the former administrator there, that we might be in opposition to this. I want to be clear, we're not. We are in fact speaking, or I'm speaking anyway, on behalf of MEA in support of this, particularly reauthorization. Child Discovery Center, for the most part, up until the recent actions, has been a good actor and a decent partner, at least in our opinion. So that's the first thing I wanted to say. Also, there's just, just to set the record straight for the folks in the room here, there seems to be a little confusion about what it is I'm doing now. And let me just say thank you to those of you who texted or called and, you know, said congratulations and things like that. That was nice. It wasn't necessary, but it was nice. I have resigned as the Grand Rapids Education Association President, and therefore also as a GRPS employee. That doesn't mean I'm moving or going away or doing any of this other stuff, because the reason I resigned that position is MEA, the Michigan Education Association, offered me a job through the state organization and asked if I would consider taking on a position working not just with GREA, but also with a number of other unions in Grand Rapids. And I accepted that position. And you can't work in both places. So that's what's going on with that, with me. My successor at this point is Mary Bowens, and she's here in the audience too, and I know she's gonna speak to you a little bit later tonight. But, you know, again, I wanted to thank everybody just for their kind words and to make sure that everybody here understands that we're in support of the reauthorization. Thank you.
You. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda are reports, secretary's report.
Just my colleagues on the board, you guys are probably aware, because some of, some of us and other cabinet-level staff are serving as table captains at the Student Advancement Fundraising Luncheon. And again, that is on October 22nd at 11:00 a.m. at the CROC Center. So I'm sure, you know, we've all had some communication with someone about it. Also, for the general public, though, we're getting ready to purge our special education files. So any students who are former GRPS students or born before 1984, or 84 before, your record is going to be purged during the month of November. And if you would like your file, the special ed portion that is, just contact Ms. Penya, Ms. Sandra Penya, P-N-A-S at GRPS.org, or give her a call at 819-2185. Transcripts and other academic records will still be held, but the special ed portion in particular is gonna be purged in the month of November. Other than that, nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Ms. Evans?
Yes, Dr. Fogg. Our report is actually a celebration. I'm going to ask John Helmuth to come forward with our enrollment report.
Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Evans, Reverend Fogg, members of the board. It is with great pleasure that I continue to echo the news that we put out on the day of Count Day last week, where we had the single best count day in more than two decades. Amen to that. As we indicated, you know, and this is coming off the Transformation Plan, where when Superintendent Neal introduced it and you all unanimously approved it, it was a very different plan. It wasn't just about cuts and closures, it was about reinvesting for growth and stability. And so we've really, these last year and a half, this was actually the first school year in almost two decades, we didn't close a single school. So that churn that you've heard talked about, that's, that's, that's coming to a close and the stability is settling in. And we believe that that, coupled with a very strong and aggressive student retention recruitment campaign, one that was district-wide, one that felt district-wide for the first time in a while. And I think that speaks a lot to, to even what happened out of the Delta Plex, where there are words that talked about coming together as a family again. And I think that our staff can see it and feel it, and our stakeholders, and these numbers show it, that when we come together internally, externally, what can we do? And we can move numbers, both academically as well as from an enrollment standpoint. And I am proud to say that for over a week, we have consistently held it within 23 students of Breaking Zero.
Right.
And that's new news. We said on our release last week, under 100, and we're still sticking with that, Monica Scott. But I'm, I'm, it's out the box. And Teresa said that she's come, now, I wanna put that with a caveat, these are preliminary. We have 30 days to collect this information. These numbers do shift. But for a week now, since Count Day, this number has stayed almost the same. We're up 420 in general ed, we're down 43 in special ed. And so our projected blended FTE count, this is not head count, this is blended FTEs, which our budget's based on. You do the math, and right now, we're 23 short of Breaking Zero. So that's the good news. I will share that, and some of you have heard some rumblings, but we intend to double down on our student retention recruitment campaign, and you ain't seen nothing yet.
All right.
Right.
Any questions? Sorry.
On that note-
Questions for Mr. Helmuth?
No questions. I mean, the, but the obvious thing, I mean, feels like we're, the promised land is in sight. I mean, this is amazing. Obviously, I, you know, we've all on the board, I think, thought for a long time that our long, number-one, long-term structural challenge has been to convince people to entrust them with their children and to prove that we've got a great school system. And at the end of the day, having those parents vote to send their kids to our schools is incredibly gratifying. So thank you to all the teachers. Because they're not, they're not coming because of us.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna say a thank you to everybody who's been involved in this effort, from teachers in the classrooms and the principals to you, Mr. Helmuth, to everybody who's been involved. It's, you can feel a culture change. That's fantastic.
If I can just echo that, I talked to a parent today who's homeless, and she managed to send her kids to school on Count Day. And she was saying that if, if I'm homeless and I can send my kids, you know, everyone else can. So that's, that's a pride that's within our parents too, so. Interesting.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more, John Helmuth, the Harlem Globetrotter Awards.
Oh, sorry, you know what? I forgot, I mentioned, I meant-
I meant to say that.
I didn't know you were in the Harlem Globetrotters.
No, 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 I forgot. Well, and one, so one of the other things, so just a few days, well, it actually dates back to last spring, where friends at SMG who managed the arena and the convention center had reached out to us and said, "We've got the Harlem Globetrotters coming, and, you know, we'd love to bring them to a school." You know, how might you go about picking a school to do that? And so we said, "Well, we're doing this great student retention recruitment campaign, and we also have this attendance challenge." And so a few days before the Count Day, we put out to the, to the system that the Harlem Globetrotters will visit the school with the highest attendance.
Nice.
And, and we, we started with our neighborhood schools, and actually, even compared to the themes, Neighborhood School, Cesare y Chavez, had a near-perfect 99-point something.
Ah.
So they were selected. CA Frost was a few short points behind them, so we've actually asked to see if the Harlem Globetrotters will do both. And they do a little assembly, and they put on a little show, and they talk about anti-bullying, and it's, it's a nice little deal. So yeah, that's, and actually, there were a number of schools that were in those high 90s percentile in attendance, and so I think you had a good push. Our Count Day has always been successful, and I think this is just one little bonus that came along with it.
Hey, Mr. Helmuth, are the board members invited to a-
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Only those who haven't missed any board meetings.
I guess Wendy won't be coming, will she?
Hey, you, you let us know. They won't be here until January, so the actual assembly won't happen until early to mid-January. I don't think Amy's here today, but, so, yeah. That's it.
Thanks to our friends at SMG for thinking of us.
Yeah, that was a really nice touch on their part.
Great community partners. All right. Next on our agenda is the only action item, and that is approval of the contract with the Child Discovery Center. Before I ask for a motion, I'd like to see if Ms. Pitts can come up and give us a little bit of context and background, and answer any questions board members have, may have regarding the contract.
Good evening, Dr. Fogg, board members, Mrs. Evans. So the process that we went through when you first approved the initial contract was that we would submit all the documents to the State Department of Education, and then they would give us feedback. So they did that. And I worked with Mr. Robinson and his board chair, along with our staff, to really respond to their questions. So as you will see, you did receive a red-line version of the contract, but just briefly, I'll go over the most, you know, the salient points. And they were really only seven points. First, we included that the academy would provide to the school board a copy of their annual report that gave their student achievement data, so that you all will receive that annually. The most important revision that we made was on the school goals, the academic goals. Initially, we had a very general goal that we would improve the achievement levels. Now, we, as a result of some conversation and really looking at what the state guidelines required, came up with specific goals in reading and math. And the reading goal would be 75% of the third, fourth, and fifth grades will demonstrate a proficiency in reading by the end of the contract, which is June the 5th of 2017, or that's, I guess, the last day they're doing the testing. And then the math goal would be 63% of the students will demonstrate proficiency in math by that same time. Then the next one we added, they wanted us to add a provision that any leases or equipment or deeds that the charter school would enter into would be on their transparency report, so that there would be full transparency about what they were doing with their, their money. We added a provision that the academy, if they offered an online or distance learning, that they would have to provide a monthly report to the Department of Education outlining the student's attendance to that. They have not planned to do that right now, but if they did, and the state just wanted that in there as a provision. The next is that they would support, they would report and submit to our board annual copies of any assessments done by the students and the outcomes of the actual assessments. So one of the first things, that first report that we talked about, the annual report, they're required to maintain their licensure, you know, the, the state not-for-profit, and so they would have to provide us proof of that, too. Then the next one was they had to add, they wanted us to add grounds for, in our grounds for revocation, that we would have to revoke the charter if the state mandated us to do so. So that's an added provision to that. And then the final one is they wanted us to add a provision about reconstituting the school. So really, they didn't want, if there was a breach, for the school to automatically, for us to automatically terminate the contract. They wanted some thinking about reconstituting it, which could mean putting in a new board, removing the charter school board and putting in a new board, looking at canceling a contract if they had one with the educational management company, which they don't have. But to look at some ways in which the, if it was operating efficiently or effectively, we chose to, that there would be some, at least consideration about some other things. So those were the three, in addition to some other attachments that we had, that's a list of some stu, teachers that were teaching and some other exhibits. Those were the major changes.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Pitt?
Okay. So if you approve this tonight, then we will submit it along with the other documents and hopefully get something back from the state saying it's all right. But they did tell us that we could continue operating during this process, and they didn't have any concern about that.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion for approval of the contract with the Child Discovery Center?
So moved.
Support for that?
Support.
Any discussion or deliberation? Seeing none, Mr. Ross, can you take the vote?
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Reverend Fogg? Action item passes eight-zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda grouping. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support for that?
Support.
When you are ready, Mr. Ross?
The support was from whom?
Uh, Ms. Slade.
Thank you. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Reverend Fogg?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes eight-zero.
We have no discussion items. We have a card for public comment.
Yes. Ms. Mary Bowhouse.
Bowens.
Bowens, excuse me.
Ms. Bowens.
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 Yes.
Let's get the name right.
Thank you.
It's cool, so I gotta get used to this. Go. Welcome.
Eleanor Roosevelt said, "You're supposed to do something every day that scares you." And I've already been through that. This is my account. Um, you have a chair, school board members, and Mrs. Evans? I'm Mary Bowens, president of GREA, and also the chair of the MEA 9A Coordinating Council. I've been with the district 30 years, and I'm married to a 30-year retiree. But my history with the district started with my parents, who each taught 30 years for the Grand Rapids Public Schools.
Oh, wow. Very nice.
So we got 120 years invested. I commend Superintendent for the amendment to hire and retain high quality staff. We need to give prospective employees a reason to come work for Grand Rapids, and also a reason to stay. And I'm confident that we are poised to do so. I'm also excited about the attendance figures for student count. As 9A Chair, I'm proud to represent the teachers, nurses, social workers, counselors, custodians, secretaries, childcare workers, and others in this district who have helped make this count possible. We have given the families a reason to stay in Grand Rapids Public Schools. So thank you for letting me introduce myself, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Ms. Evans? No comments. Mr. Ross?
No comment.
Yes, I have a comment, but it's more a statement than it's a comment. I just wanted to say that on Friday, I attended the Union High School football game. And the, the perception that I received was that the morale was pretty low. The attendance was very low. And one of the things that entered into my mind is that, well, whatever happened to school spirit? And I guess my concern is that we used to hear the high school football song sung, and I don't think that's happening anymore in our high schools. I want to push Union a little bit, because when I saw that, my heart was kind of broken. They played as hard as they could, even though they've been losing. But sometimes when you lose, you win. And you win in terms that if we could figure out a way how we can help Union get their spirit back. They need a lot of work. Their equipment room, their athletic room is at an all-time low, and I'm appealing to all of the former Union High School students that once attended Union graduated, who are probably doing well, to step into Union and see what you can do to help the athletic department and to help their weight room. I attended Union High School years ago in the 70s. I played football there. However, I graduated from another school in my senior year, but I still have a heart for Union, and it just broke my heart. So I'm asking, are we, as parents, really making a real effort to participate in the athletics of our kids? Academic is very important, but I believe if a kid is able to perform on the field or soccer or baseball, he or she should do well in class, if they have the proper equipment. So I'm making a plea for Union High School, especially for parents, to come out and participate with your children as they are involved in sports. Also, making a plea for teachers to also be active in what's going on in the school. It used to be a time that the principals would get on the intercom and push for a day of support or football rallies, and I don't think we do that anymore. Maybe I'm wrong, but I have not seen it in the past. So that's my comment tonight. Don't forget Union High School. We're doing a lot to push Ottawa, but let us not forget Union High School.
Thank you, Pastor Moody. Reverend Mathias?
Uh, no comment.
Mr. LaGranne?
Well, you all know I'm a quick read. I took a look at the Fifth Third curriculum. I scanned it. It's, it's, it's a good place to start. It's, it's, it's a good place to start. I think if we're really gonna do a good job taking these, this need seriously for these students, we probably ought to be engaged on reviewing this curriculum and maybe fine-tuning it in, in consultation with Fifth Third. I'm sure they'd be open to that. I'm really glad that, that they came and talked to us today, and really glad to see that they are planning on enroll, increasing this program. I think it'd be great if we could harness all the banks in town to actually get some financial literacy into the schools, because actual financial literacy is a huge deal for long-term success for these students. So I think every kid ought to get taught how to make a budget, and how to balance a checkbook, and basic things that maybe their parents don't know how to teach them. I know my wife never got taught by her parents. So I'm really glad that Fifth Third's involved in this, and, and I hope we can expand it, and I hope we can work, I mean, it's a great example of cooperative work with a community partner that's maybe better set up to do this stuff than we are, but if we can do it together, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to, to improve our trajectory for our students.
Dr. Randles?
I just want to congratulate everyone again on the count. I think that is so awesome, and it does reflect really well on the teachers and staff, and I think helps in terms of teacher retention with these numbers and bonus situations. So that's fantastic. And I did want to make one comment about, I was at a swim meet this weekend at the Ottawa Hills Invitational, and I think it was OK Rainbow Conference sort of meet, everyone was there, and, and Union there was well-represented, and I actually performed very well. So I don't want everyone to think, although I think it's great to, to point out where team spirit is, is lacking, but at least there are some areas where their performance is really doing well.
Mr. O'Connor? Ms. Slade?
Just want to welcome Mary Bowens to your, to your new role with us, and look forward to working with you.
Did you hire her mom?
Her husband worked for me. Coincidentally, you know, it just so happened, the husband did. You see?
I want to reiterate that, it was impressive to hear your family history with GRPS. The longer I'm a parent, the longer I'm the board, I really feel that we are GRPS, and especially with this Count Day, it just, it feels like we are all a team, and it's wonderful to have someone with your history representing the teachers. I also want to point out that tomorrow is, I'm looking forward to the parent engagement kickoff at Ottawa Hills High School. That's a fantastic event, speaking of parent engagement, so I'm looking forward to that. You had something?
I just want to jump back in, asking a Union shout-out, because their soccer team is in first place in the division at the OK.
All right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Ross, for that, and meeting adjourned.